Here.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I would take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Take your pick.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comments. It's the time and place for any item, for anybody in the audience to speak to any items that are not on a public hearing. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium. I do have one card. If anybody else would like to speak, I'd ask you to fill the cards out, give them to the clerk, and she'll hand them off to me. Mr. Capello, you're first.
I take it this is the podium of the meeting?
Podium for you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Chip Capello. I live at 417 Hillcrest. I'm here in Polk City. I've lived here for 30 years last month. And I want to speak about fireworks. I have a birthday once a year, as each of you have a birthday once a year. And I celebrate my birthday on my birthday. Our country has a birthday once a year. I ask that we celebrate our country's birthday on our birthday, one day. For about nine months of our married life, my wife and I lived in Philadelphia, the birthplace of our nation. They have a law, I looked it up, they do not allow fireworks. So the citizens of Philadelphia, on the Fourth of July and on New Year's, they stick their head out the window and they fire their guns in the air in celebration of our independence. From June 30th until July 7th, that's what the law says in Polk City. But last night was July 9th, and it was still going on, okay? Fireworks, and it's supposed to be in at 9 o'clock, except on, or sorry, 10 o'clock, except on the Fourth of July, which was 11 o'clock. And it goes on all the way till midnight every night. On the Fourth of July, my neighbors, our Hillcrest neighborhood, our street, in case you don't know, it's one block long, we all sat outside and enjoyed the fireworks that the neighbors had. And it had a wonderful time. It was a neighborhood party, and we do it every year. But I ask that you would consider the dates, not eliminate fireworks like some cities do, okay? And I did check out our nation's capital. They also have a no fireworks law, okay, which I think is, is fine, okay, if that's, those are big cities. But I ask you to look and maybe refine your dates to limit them to just the Fourth of July. And it wouldn't even bother me if you also had it on New Year's Eve, because we celebrate a new year. That would be fine. Mr. Sholley knows all about New Year's Eve. Mr. Sholley used to be a member of our little Hillcrest community. You all know about that. We were all pretty close up there. That's all I ask. And I realize that the, that the state has some limitations on it. And it's all going to become very political if you look at the, what it says in the newspaper and under the, in the letters to the editor and in the two cents worth, okay? And I realize that some people on the DAAS there are, are up for election, okay? But I ask you to look at it and maybe even beat the state. Now, if the state trumps you in the end, that's all right, but you did your job. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Range of pace.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here in support of the fireworks with our neighborhood. I live on 812 Edge Water Drive. There are many neighbors. Tracy's here. And I understand their complaints about what's happened. As for me, I have come from Missouri, where fireworks are legal, 365. I grew up shooting fireworks. It's very new to everyone here. It's a great celebration. The time restraint, I don't see anything wrong with it. Cutting it down to the fourth, like this gentleman said, I think is a bad idea. Not everyone is here on the fourth. You know, as a, as a former firefighter, you never know when those guys are gone. Other people work on the fourth. Not everyone is off the Fourth of July. The big thing for me is, it's a great way to celebrate our country's independence. We were founded on the freedoms that everybody enjoys. And this is one of them that I firmly believe. If you want to restrict the times, but, you know, 10 o'clock during the week or on every day but the Fourth of July, you're always going to have people. I've lived here for six years. There's fireworks getting shot off in this town every year when they were not legal. Maybe not as many. It will probably tone down next year, considering it was new to everybody. It was passed right before the Fourth of July. It's something that everyone was excited about. I do not see any reason why people can't enjoy it. You know, you're always going to have people ruining stuff for other people. You can't control what everyone does. You're going to have the people that shoot it off at 2:00 a.m. I didn't like hearing artillery shells going off at 1, 2 o'clock in the morning either. But you're going to have people out there. It's the same thing with drunk drivers. If drunk drivers are, if people are going to drive drunk, should we outlaw cars? I hear people's dogs bark all throughout the night, year round. We're going to outlaw dogs in town? This is a constant thing that people deal with every day. And the fact that fireworks are here for seven or eight days, 10 days, whatever they are, is not that big of an issue to let people have a good time and celebrate it. So I see no reason why. The timeframes that you guys set, there's nothing wrong with it. The fact that people are complaining at 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, it's still daylight at 9 o'clock. You can't shoot fireworks off before that. Some of you can. But the ones that everybody enjoys, you know, the Fourth of July, I got home from Southern Iowa from my in-law's house. We weren't going to go anywhere, watch fireworks. We sat outside, watched people shoot off fireworks. My three-year-old son loved. We enjoyed every second of it. So the fact that we're allowed to do that now is something that I appreciate, and many people do appreciate. And I'm here to talk for those people. And that's pretty much all I got to say.
Thank you. Justin Young.
Mayor, councilman, I'm actually from Edge Water Drive as well. And, you know, I'll just have to respectfully disagree. I think fireworks are a fine thing to do on the Fourth. But as someone who also has a young child, I know our child was woken up several times this week by fireworks going off. Went off for about 10 days, and I guess I would have to side with the first speaker. Celebrated on the Fourth of July, can put up with it then. It's fine. We know there's going to be noise. We know that's going to happen. When it's going off last night, I don't understand how that's celebrated on the Fourth of July. To me, I just personally don't feel like that's the case. I personally, someone who does not enjoy the noise, does not enjoy the constant being woke up, and my child being woke up. And so I understand that this is law. We're going to have some fireworks going off. And I would just request that it be on the Fourth. And we can deal with it on the Fourth in celebration of the holiday. We can deal with it on New Year's in celebration of the holiday. And when it's not on the holiday, I request that it be something that we allow. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who didn't get a chance to speak? Move on. Consent agenda. Take a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Motion carries. Item six, new business, under new business action. Item one, Wesley Life Rio conduit bond. It's now time to close a regular meeting and open public hearing on issuance of a conduit revenue bond for the Wesley Life Rio project of Johnson. I'll ask the clerk when the notice was published?
June 17th.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
Perfect. At this time, I'd like to have staff provider report.
Hey, Chris, were you going to do that? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, city council members, before, in terms of the public hearing, this is the time for the public hearing. And if there's any oral comments, it doesn't seem like there are. But in terms of the resolution before the city council, this would be the last action, official action that would be needed to be taken by the city council. It would approve the issuance of the conduit bonds, not to exceed the $7 million. The final documents would be finalized before closing in August. We're working with Amy and the Allers Law Firm to finalize those documents. That would be our normal procedure. We have a representative here from Wesley Life. If you have any questions about the project itself that we had talked about. Just to reiterate the main points, this is not a debt of the city. In order for a nonprofit 501(c)(3) borrower to borrow money on a tax-exempt basis, they need a governmental issuer. The city of Granger is holding their hearing and authorizing on Wednesday. And the city of Windsor Heights is meeting on the following Monday for the issuance as well. So with the three cities, that would be the governmental issuers that will assist Wesley Life in the taking this project forward. The resolution itself also states that it's not a debt of the city. You are not, the city is not responsible for repayment. No taxes would ever be levied against the citizens of Polk City. It would be simply that you, the city would be a conduit issuer, step out of the picture, and the lender would solely service that loan. There would be no involvement after closing for city staff to have to service that loan. Again, it also approves the execution of the documents, allowing the mayor and the city clerk, after those documents are finalized by your legal counsel, to get those signed and executed for closing. We would work with Gary and the city staff in finalizing and getting signature pages to the city. And of course, payment of the fee, issuer fee, and any costs would be made at the time of closing of the bond issued to the city from the proceeds of the bonds or from Wesley Life's own funds. Happy to entertain any questions on that. So far, we've had, the publication is, is all in order. And we're working with the other cities to move this towards closing in August.
Any questions?
Do we still get the residents of Polk City still get a discount?
That one's for you, Calvin.
Any other questions? I know we reviewed this a month or so ago. Got us at this point? Okay. If not, I need a motion to close a public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Next item, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-68, authorizing and providing for the issuance of conduit revenue bond for the Wesley Life Rio of Johnson project. Take a motion.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Item two, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-66, setting a public hearing on the proposed agreement for a private development with Freelodge Investments LLC, Polk City I Care Inc., and Torres Team LLC. I assume this meeting will be July 24th, close to 6:30. Take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, consider motion to approve resolution 2017-67, accepting public improvements for Lost Lakes Estates, Plant 3. Kathleen?
Uh, yes. This plant was substantially completed last fall. This is a 22 lot subdivision that was actually constructed simultaneously with Plant 4. The platform improvements are nearly done. There was some delay on getting an easement in the trail connection. So we've got a few cleanup items right there. So I anticipate those are even for you shortly. But again, all the public improvements were constructed in substantial conformance to the approved construction. The maintenance, the maintenance bonds were provided to the city clerk.
Questions, Kathleen?
Because you guys brought it up, that trail connection does look good now that it's actually connecting the trail and up to the edge of.
Yeah, they have some seating to do and a few things like that, but it does.
Take a motion. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, consider motion to approve the second reading ordinance 2017-800, amending Chapter 55, Animal Protection and Control, Section 55.17, impounding costs and amending Chapter 56, cat and dog licenses, Section 56.01, annual license required. Take a motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Motion carries. Item five, consider motion to approve third reading ordinance 2017-600, no parking and loading zones. Motion. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six, fireworks discussion. So I asked to have this placed on the agenda for us to talk about again. For those in the audience who haven't, have been following local government for a while, we have addressed fireworks several times. As a matter of fact, fireworks has been on our agenda for the last two months we've had this conversation. Interestingly enough, when we first brought it up, we had one person show up to that council meeting. And the one person who showed up actually was in favor of fireworks. All of that being said, we internally here have been spending a lot of time dealing with fireworks, I would say probably since about last February, trying to really get a handle on where the state was going to go with this. And when it became apparent that this is what the state was going to do, and then it was unfortunately delayed being signed by the governor at the time, it definitely left all of the local governments in a real pickle as far as what they're going to do. And I think that's hence the reason that you really saw the whole hodgepodge of restrictions in the whole metro area, not only in the metro area, but obviously throughout the state. I definitely share in the concern of some people with some fireworks. In all honesty, I have four kids. I have two dogs. Truth be told, I didn't go to a fireworks display this year. I didn't even let my kids do sparklers. I just, honestly, I was, quite honestly, burned out with it between the people who we were hearing from, via email, phone calls, or, you know, some of the other things that were going on. All of that being said, we heard and saw more people taking advantage of this new law than what we heard or have seen in people who are coming out and asking us to make some changes to the ordinance. Not saying that that's right or wrong, but I'm saying, in our position right now, we have to take a look at this. I think the most important thing that we can do, as the people sitting up here making the decisions that affect the entire community, is not rush to judgment at this point. We just passed an ordinance at the last council meeting. And if we were to change an ordinance every time that we had a handful of people come to us right after we had just made an ordinance, I think that's a slippery slope. We don't want to personally go down. All of that being said, I think that we're going to continue to look at it. And I'm not saying that there won't be any changes made. We actually, in our, in the recommendation that was put forth that we ultimately approved from the 30th to the 7th, was more restrictive than a lot of the communities around us. We did put time constraints in at 10 o'clock, and we did follow the state law of 11 o'clock on the Fourth of July. From the communities that I heard from, and I've heard from a lot in the last week, I've talked to people both within Polk City and outside of Polk City, the communities who had an all-out ban or who had a six-hour restriction in place, it was as bad, if not worse, as far as the noise complaints that they were getting from those, from those other communities. What we did in putting an ordinance in place from the 30th of June to July 7th, and putting the time restrictions on it, was to hope that maybe we would indeed be able to enforce those time restrictions. So the question I've had to some people has not necessarily been, do you have a problem with the law? But do you have a problem with the people breaking the law? Because after 10 o'clock, clearly that was breaking the law. So I encouraged people, if you had a problem with it, to get a hold of our police department, call 911. If it's 10:01 and they're shooting off fireworks, they're breaking that law. So that really isn't back on us to deal with at that point, because to your comment, I still believe that regardless of the law that the state passed, which, again, I don't agree with. I don't agree that we should have this fireworks ordinance. I don't agree that the state should have passed this. But because we've got it, now we have to deal with it. But before that, let's face it, people were doing them, and we had no control over it, other than it was a law that was on the books. What we have to do now is figure out what we're going to do next. And what we're not going to do is, in my opinion, in talking to people, I hope, is that we're not going to do a rushed judgment to make an immediate change. Two hours ago, I just got off the phone with our local supervisor from Polk County to see what they were going to do. I know that when, part of the reason that we didn't take some similar action to some of the other communities was because where we sit in relation to the other metro communities, we've got, we're bordered by unincorporated Polk County all the way around us. We were in a very interesting position as far as what we do with having unincorporated Polk County all around us. Polk County did not have the support from the board of supervisors level to enact any sort of an ordinance at the county level, at least prior to this week. What they do next is yet to be seen, and I think that there will potentially be some changes that come. What I am concerned about happening, though, quite honestly, beyond what happens at the local level, at the county level, is what's going to happen at the state level. If you've paid attention to the news in the last week, specifically since about the Fourth of July, I've heard from two senators, as well as a congressman, who've all said that they intend to bring forth additional legislation to make changes, to have some sort of a cleanup on the bill that they passed. Now, my concern with that is, is the more communities that continue to push back on it, they, it will be, in my opinion, similar to the minimum wage discussion that happened this last year. Minimum wage was an issue until Polk County and Johnson County decided they wanted to come out and make it higher. And then the state came in and they said, nope, we're not going to allow it. And then we're going to just keep a low minimum wage. And I'm not getting on the minimum wage soapbox by any means. It's just an example of my concern of them taking away the local control that we already have. And I think that there is every chance that that could happen. But to take that a step further, what we do have to deal with, and what we will be dealing with in short time, is the sales of fireworks. Because we put a moratorium on sales. We did not have any sales in Polk City. I know that frustrated a couple of the, of the senators, a couple of which are actually our representatives, and I do know will be here in our parade on Saturday. And they, I know, didn't like the way some of the metro cities pushed back and enacted ordinances that said, if you want to sell fireworks, they pushed them to industrial areas and of the such. So I do think that you're going to see an increase of the sales and where they can be put, or, and where they can be sold at. For anybody who's listening on camera, or anybody who's here, if you have a concern with the fireworks legislation that was passed, if there's one thing I could tell you or ask you to do is to contact your state legislators. Our hands are somewhat tied, although I agree that we need to take a serious, hard look at the dates that we allow, and I, and we will. It's just nothing, I think, that we're going to address at this point in time until we really get a chance to not only hear from those of you who came tonight, but also to see what the other cities are going to do in the metro. I know Councilman Sarchet, for example, will be in a meeting tomorrow morning that I'm confident he'll come up at. And I'm sure that there'll be a lot of other conversations that's going to take place. But I think what we really need to do is everybody kind of step back and see what we're going to do. The thing that we do have going for us is that our ordinance that we did pass does not allow for the discharging of fireworks over Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve. So really, if there's anybody who's discharging fireworks from here till next July, they're breaking the law. And if they're breaking the law, I encourage them to call 911. I don't care what time of day it is, you're breaking the law. And have the police department come up. The enforcement is a whole nother issue, and that's part of the reason that we did go with the June 30th to July 7th. I talked to our chief of police virtually every day over this timeframe to see if we've seen an increase of calls, where we're at. We saw some calls, but I wouldn't say that we had, we had data to back it up yet to say that we had an increased number of calls compared to what we've seen last year or the other previous years. That's kind of my pitch. I could go on and on, because clearly I've been dealing with this for way too long. But I do appreciate those who came out. I really do. Because honestly, there's more here tonight than we're here in the four weeks that we dealt with it over the course of two months of those four meetings. I say, stay tuned. I think that we will be making some changes, because I think there's going to be changes that are going to be forced on us. We will have to deal with the sales piece of it again. But again, I want to say, I appreciate everybody coming out. We'll, we've got some time. And what we really need to do is step back, take a good look at it, and figure out what we're going to do next. If anybody else has additional comments, I'd welcome them now.
I agree. I mean, I know it sounds like I'm playing both sides of the fence here, but I agree with a little bit of what everybody has said here tonight on both sides of the issue. It's unfortunate that some people can't be a good neighbor and live within those rules. And it's also unfortunate that the previous governor was worried more about telling everybody they was long deserved governor than getting this done ahead of time and making it easy. But since he's in China now, that doesn't matter. At the same time, you know, there's, a lot of people have said to me, well, why don't the, it's enforcement issue, why don't you do this on whatever? That's not quite as easy to sound either. You know, if you have somebody that's, what I would tell everybody is, quite honestly, the obvious, if you know somebody that's violating that law and is just pissing off your entire neighborhood, and you know who that somebody is that's ruining it for everybody else, you need to identify John Doe. Because unless the police see them shoot that off, I mean, their hands are somewhat tied too. I mean, I can hear something in my block, for instance, at 2:00 in the morning, you know, but by the time they get there, those people up, or they're, did the cowardly thing and ran inside, or they just can't be found. So it may take, you know, concerned citizens signing that piece of paper saying, I saw John Doe do it. And I know that sucks. But there's no other way to enforce that. You know, you got to see it. So don't let the few bad eggs ruin it for everybody, I guess is what I'm saying. And meantime, like Jason said, we'll do the best with what we know at the time, and that's going to be ever-changing. But we, we've all been heard, and I, I agree with a little bit of everything that I've heard on each side of the fence.
I'll bounce down here, then I'll come back. How's that? Ron, do you have anything, Dan?
Well, I was just going to say, as a council as a whole, we obviously don't do everything right. But we don't do everything wrong either. And having said that, I think, given the time to think about it, we're going to get something in place. There will be changes made. And other than if the state supersedes, like Mr. Capello said, I think we'll have something a little bit more tolerant next year. I don't know if this is bad to admit. I don't have a strong preference on this one, honestly. I don't like getting woken up any more than the next guy. When I first moved to town, had a neighbor who got on his motorcycle as hard as he could the second he got out of his driveway, and it drove me nuts. And whether that was at night or during the day, it drove me nuts. I also think that we're very limited. So I get the, you know, I have kids too, so I get the fireworks are loud, that wakes people up. I also know for a fact in talking from the group, that Johnson in particular had a flat ban. It was referred to as a Middle East war-torn country on the Fourth of July from a noise standpoint. So I don't know how impactful a rule that we change is going to be from a, it's not going to happen at all standpoint. I know, I think, regardless of what we do, we're putting Trace and his team in a pretty tough spot. It's a difficult thing to enforce. I don't like the fact that this has been as divisive and expensive as it's been. I don't know that everybody realizes that Amy does a good job. She doesn't donate her time. So for us, this size of community, we have to engage legal representation on an hourly basis. And this has cost us a lot of money because of the time. And that's, quite honestly, the most frustrating part. So to round back around, I appreciate the folks that showed up tonight. I appreciate the folks that emailed before this past week. And I'm kind of with Ron. I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense to jump the gun on, on making a change now. That won't have any impact for the rest of the year. But we said when we first enacted the rule that we would revisit it. This is a new thing. It was rushed. And I think sticking to that plan, and would just encourage people to provide feedback. If that's coming to a meeting, if you're more comfortable with their email or phone call, please do that as well. But that's, that's where I'm at, I guess.
I don't have a whole lot to add. I appreciate you people coming in. I've always said I hate making that decision in a vacuum.
But that's where I'm at, I guess.
I don't have a whole lot to add. I appreciate people coming in. I've always said I hate making a decision in a vacuum up here, which means not much input from the city, citizens or whatever. I mean, I know not everybody has time to come down here and engage the council or whatever, but I appreciate it when people do do that regardless of where they sit on whatever the issue may be. Again, just like everybody's been saying, I don't see any reason to immediately do something that the state may totally take it out of our hands anyway. So I'm with those that are wanting to wait and let things shake out a bit before we decide what to do.
I want to just, Rob did make one point, and he made a comment about being rushed, and that wasn't rushed because of something that we did, but we were rushed to make a decision in order to get something on the books so that we could have some sort of a rule so that we didn't have to follow state law. I mean, we literally were down to the last meeting by the time that we were given this from the governor, we had to make a decision right then. And every other community had to do the same thing, and that's again, that's why you saw some of the hodgepodge. There wasn't one other comment that I wanted to make. And unfortunately, a lot of what happened that I was afraid was going to happen, happened. And this pitted neighbor against neighbor. I have seen and heard from a number of people who have a problem directly with what their neighbor was doing, and it unfortunately has created some tension with some neighborhoods, and that was nothing that was put. We were forced to make this decision, and it's unfortunate that neighbors are going against neighbors by a decision that we had nothing to do with. It's affecting my community, it's affecting our community by something we had nothing to do with. Regardless of what we do up here, because of that new state law, there are neighbors who live right next door to one another who don't like it, and it's causing people to take extreme action, because there was a couple people who did have some extreme action and honestly, make some threats to even some of those of us who are sitting up here that quite honestly made some of us feeling uncomfortable because of their strong opinion on some things. I do appreciate those people who took time to email us and call us and who were professional about it. Those people who decided to take it to a different level, it's unfortunate because that really just kind of made the whole situation worse. So again, I think we're, we definitely will be having further conversations about it. I encourage you to continue if you're watching, if you're here, continue to watch our website. If you're not signed up for our email list, get on it so you can see. I mean, you know, this will be on an agenda again, and you know, please, please show up. We'll move on. Under my report, I've just got one reminder that it is the festival this coming weekend. Obviously, you have street closures on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, just pay attention to it. I do need a count, and I know how much you guys love this, but I do need a count on how many of you need a car for Saturday. Rob?
I'm good, thanks.
Rob? I'm looking at you.
Anything for you, Mr. Ray.
Perfect, that's what I wanted you to hear, or that's what I wanted you to say, Rob. You'll be there?
He'll be in town.
Dan, will you be there?
I'll be there.
Ron, will you be there?
Absolutely.
Perfect, that's what I needed to hear. Thanks, Rob.
Cars, you'll have me sit in the back of my truck.
Cars, we're going to have cars. I just had to get a count for cars. I was, I was a big.
Why do you have any shirts?
So I'll bring that up, actually. So unfortunately, the P of P and M monogramming did pass away over the weekend, so they were a little delayed.
Can we request our cars? I'd like a '63 Corvette.
You can request it. I can't tell you I'm going to do anything about it, but you can request it, Ron. Anyway, if you're watching or if you're here, please come down. It's always a great time, it is our tenth annual, and it's amazing what it has grown from, and it is a real good time to get out and see friends and neighbors and try and have that good positive neighborly relations.
And no fireworks.
And no fireworks. Nice. Councilman DeVorek is in Colorado, unfortunately apologizes for his absence. Mr. Mordini?
Just capitalizing on what was said earlier, I mean, this firework has divided a lot of people. I know I live on Edge One or Two, and I've heard from both sides of it. But at the end of the day, you know, just, I guess the best advice I can give is to treat your neighbor as you wish, because I think a lot of these are, a few bad apples are making a bet for everybody, and I think if we all treat each other like Iowa's known to be known for, I think we'll get through this and it'll be better at the end, whether the law looks the same next year or what have you. We'll work to make it better here, and it'll all work out.
Go. Sarchet?
Only thing I wanted to bring up was in last month's Metro Advisory Council meeting, it was sort of a legislative wrap-up, and there was a lot to discuss. And unfortunately, I was a little bit surprised to hear that some communities were still kind of pushing forward the local option sales tax issue even to the, there's some communities that want to move ahead with it even though the legislative didn't, is what I'm trying to say. So I bring that up now as we go into a new fiscal year, and one of the reasons, one of the questions I get, and most of them are more topical than the budget, but I do occasionally get asked why we have the amount of money that we have in our bank account, the city's bank account, and local option sales tax and the fluidity with which that is going to be impactful to us is the main reason, at least from my perspective. So that will impact us if it changes. I hope Mr. Mordini's prediction that it won't change is still true, but I think again, since it has, it could have a big impact on us, it's worth bringing up. And so when those discussions come up, I try to make sure that I'm paying attention, and there's a whole lot that we can do now differently than what we are doing, which is being responsible, working on a surplus and making sure we're prepared as best we can, so.
Mr. Lane?
Just a couple of things. First, I'd like to apologize for missing the meeting last week. I was under the weather, as they say, which would have made the second part a little more timely if I had been here last time. After two years of decreased costs, they had an increased cost with the Waste Management Authority's Curb It program, which has resulted in a 3% increase for fiscal year 17, 18, in real numbers that figures out to eight cents per household increase or for a total of $2.66, which is still among the very lowest rates in the entire nation.
Sit. Anderson?
Not a whole lot, just like, so thank everybody for showing up, for coming out. Like to see faces in the audience. It's, makes you feel like you're doing this for a purpose when people are here to listen and give input, and thank you. That's about all I have.
Excellent. Any further council discussion?
Yes, I would, based on what the other Rob here has said, I know that discussion on the local option sales tax comes up yearly, if not bi-yearly, and I'm still willing to take that bet with anybody. I think people are tired of paying taxes and at the rates they are, and I think it'd be the kiss of death for any government body that loaded another one on them, so I wish them well.
City Administrator's report?
I have two things, Your Honor. First, HomeServe, this is the insurance that you can buy for your water lines going into your house, for sewer lines, as well as water lines with inside the house. We'll have another campaign, it will be in August. It looks like August 11th will be the date that they are targeting for a mailing. Recently, we did some traffic counts and traffic gaps at the corner of Third and Bridge. Third and Bridge now meets traffic warrants for a traffic signal. Staff as well as Snyder and Associates are working with the DOT on the next steps.
And that's all I have. Appreciate those numbers. Chip, chair on that committee?
Well, you asked. I really think we ought to petition the county to put a traffic light at Beaver Road and Bridge Road, where it's a four-waist stop, because it just, if you're on Tyler, if you're trying to get on the bridge to go across the bridge, at some times of the day, you're sitting there for half an hour.
Yeah, we've been hearing a number of complaints about that whole corridor up through there.
Do you have any influence with the DOT?
Yeah, I.
I know you do.
Did the traffic count for you guys?
Well, those were some interesting numbers, to say the least. Do we have the number for that traffic count? They were shocking. Think you could get that out, I guess?
I will get those. Yes, I do have them.
Let's put it this way, they weren't done in February on a Tuesday in the middle of winter this time around.
You would be surprised.
Yeah, you would. The amount of cars that go through there was quite shocking. Attorney's report? Engineers' report? Public Works?
Just that we have started on some of the sidewalk, excuse me, crosswalk improvements. We had the painters in last week, and we didn't paint some of the crossbars, and we painted some turn lanes, those type of things. So we've started on that process.
You can see they were repainting the bike lane today up Broadway.
Yeah.
Technology? Make us look good on camera tonight?
Oh, yeah.
Did your job, that's all I ask. Finance? Fire Department not here, Police Department?
Not to beat the fireworks thing to death, this will be quick. From the Police Department's side, we do everything we can to enforce anything that's outside of the city ordinance, but the prosecutors want us to have the person in front of us setting it off to prosecute a charge. Not blaming the prosecutors, but just so people know, we were very proactive with our proactive patrol, extra officers working at peak times to address those concerns. So not making excuses, but it's just very, very difficult to enforce it.
Thank you for you guys putting the extra time on this week, too. I know that was a lot of work. Library report? Neighborhood citizens here, but not taking motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Danny, it's up to you to write that down as far as you got.
I've had it twice and told you.
Yes.